Welcome, welcome!
Thank you!
How are you?
I'm very good, excited!
Excited? So, before we start, let me explain you with what is breath work, what you can experience during the session, and then you can ask me any questions you may have. So, what is breath work is actually, we say it's a somatic approach, it starts with the body. It's the most powerful, direct and best way to connect with your body and to connect with your emotions. But it is also, for me, one of the best ways to release the past, release emotional blockages, release traumas from the past. And then, breath work is a magical way to enter altered states of consciousness. So you, as you can imagine, you can reach magical places and have very esoteric and mystical experiences, or see visions, or, as we say, it's like a more meditation part. So it's very nice that you mentioned, because breath work and meditation can come together, and when they come together, magic happens. And as I like to say, breath work is our consciousness, is our life force energy, is the feminine energy, and meditation is the masculine energy, is the grounding. So of course, we need both, but with breath work, we can really reach a meditative state in the end. And that's very good for people that they have a really monkey mind and they cannot reach that place. Because for me, meditation, it's a more advanced technique. Not everyone can do it at the beginning. But the breath is the foundation of everything, and through the breath, you can reach there. Okay? So breath work is a holistic, beautiful approach. It connects mind, body and spirit all together, that's why I love it. I had such profound experiences on mental, emotional, physical and spiritual level. That's why I really wanna share it with the world. And as I said, it's a somatic approach, so it starts within the body. You are gonna have a lot of physical sensations, and that's completely normal. You're gonna have tingling sensations, numbness, maybe lightheadedness. Actually, it's very cool that you can reach very psychedelic or ecstatic states with your breath alone. I find it amazing. You don't need to drink or do drugs or nothing at all. And what you can experience, and it might be a bit scary, but actually, I will tell you exactly what to do if you feel it, is tetany. If your hands are locked like that, did you have it?
A friend of mine had it, actually. During the event, she had this symptom, and then she was sharing it after the session.
Yes. It's completely normal, and actually, very usual to have it at the beginning of a breath work experience and journey. I had it all the time. So your hands locked like that, it is called tetany, it's very normal. And what I want you to do, if you experience it, is really relax and surrender. The more you resist, the harder it becomes. So for me, breath work is a beautiful journey also to learn how to surrender and trust, not only in the process and in breath work, but in life in general. Because when you have new experiences, when you are in the unknown, as we know both from Dr. Joe, then the mind is afraid, the mind is scared of the unknown, right? So it's a beautiful journey to start surrendering and relaxing, getting comfortable in that experience and that space.
Yeah, I think it's, what you're saying is super important, and it's something that also helped me so much in my journey to learn to let go and relax and surrender. Because I think, yeah, I view like a professional, or you're ambitious etc., you always want to be in control.
Yes.
You say, oh, you want to, you know, be on top of everything. And then, when you just learn to let go and to trust and know actually that you're taken care of and supported and protected always.
Yeah.
I think that's really nice. It's like a weight to lift from your shoulder, and then you get to enjoy more. And then, even though you have like, maybe less control over what you cannot control, like, things tend to come easier to you.
Yes.
Because I think it's not, it's about releasing control over the things we cannot control, you know? And then focus on what we can actually execute and do on the here and now, on our daily lives. But I think we just try to control like the bigger picture, like the uncontrollable, basically. And this creates really big resistance in the end.
Yes.
So I think it's a good practice for that.
Beautiful! Let me share maybe how the process will look like. So we start like that, we have three phases, you don't need to remember anything. I will guide you during the session. But we start on a sitting position. We are gonna do conscious connected breath work. We call it conscious connected breath work because, as we said before, we breathe during our days thousands of times, but we do it unconsciously. Magic happens when we start breathing consciously. So it's good that you have an intention, we are all gonna talk about the intention later. And in a connected way, which means without pauses in between. Every inhale is followed by the exhale, and every exhale by the inhale, and this is how we activate the body. You're gonna feel things in your body like that. So conscious connected breath work. And then, so you start like that, on a sitting position, in through the nose, out through the mouth, relaxing the body, have like a grounding exercise. And then, when I tell you, you will lay down. I would like you to have closed the eyes, so you can go deeper. And then, we move to mouth breathing, in through the mouth, out through the mouth. That's a bit more intense, and it's exactly where you will start feeling resistance from your body and mind. Maybe you will start feeling pain that you didn't feel before. So I want you to know that your mind and your body will do everything they can to take you out of the process. Maybe you will start feeling hungry, or I don't know, start feeling, "I wanna go back home," or "I am tired of breathing." People are tired of breathing. It's a bit challenging, I must say. But it's very beautiful, and I say all the time, magic happens, because in a breath work session, magic happens, when you push through and get out of your comfort zone. Okay? So then, you lay down with your eyes closed. That's the biggest part of the session. And then, when I tell you, "Come back to your normal breathing," it's the last part where you relax, it's more the meditative state, where you can see whatever, you know, every person is, for every person is different. And normal breathing is how you breathe now, you don't need to think about your breath. That's it, very simple. Okay?
Alright.
Questions?
No, I think it's clear. I think I'm more ready for it now.
Two things I want you to remember, one, we said already, conscious connected, we keep it connected. If you stop between the breaths, you get out of the process. Secondly, we do deep diaphragmatic belly breathing. In our daily lives, we breathe very sallow from the chest, thoracic breathing, and what we do actually is we do that. We put out the chest and the bell inside. That's wrong, we wanna do exactly the opposite. So we want to have the shoulders and the chest area very relaxed, otherwise, we cannot take down the breath. And I want you to feel your belly expanding every time you take a deep breath in. So we are gonna demonstrate that at the beginning, because we are gonna do belly breathing during the entire session. I mean, the first phase and the second.
Yeah.
Okay? Would you like to do that a little bit now, just to demonstrate?
Yeah, we can.
So one hand on your chest, yes? And one on your belly. I want you to relax the shoulders, like, you can put some movement in your shoulders area, just to relax them. And deep breath in from the nose, all the way down to your belly, and I want you to feel your belly expanding. And out for the mouth. The inhalation is active and the exhalation is passive. You just let go of the exhale, you don't push the exhalation. Very nice. I want you to feel whether there is any movement in the chest area, and I want you to feel your belly expanding. Keeping the breath connected without pauses in between. Yeah, do you feel the difference already, maybe? From daily breathing?
And like, what is the pace that we should go with?
You find your own pace. I just want you to really keep it connected. Because if you do it very, very slowly, it can be that actually you don't feel anything. So if you don't feel anything, I want you to go deeper. Deeper does not mean faster. When I say to people, "Deeper," sometimes it... Then we have hyperventilation, we don't want that.
Okay.
But deeper means put more oxygen into your belly. So I want you to go like, if you, because it can be that you're not feeling anything. It means you need to go deeper. If you want to fasten the pace a little bit, that's also okay, as long as you really breathe from the belly.
Okay, got it. So not super fast?
Finding your own pace. And we have also some music in the background, and that will help you find your pace. Because I want you to connect with your breath and connect with the music and get lost in the process. I don't want you to think. Every time you catch your mind to think about something, I want you to focus on your breath, in, out, in, out. So I want you really to be the observer. Maybe you have some thoughts or some feelings. Actually, talking about feelings, it's a very emotional experience as well. So it can be that you have certain emotions arise, because in breath work, we work with the subconscious mind. We bypass the analytical mind and the ego mind, and we go directly to the core. So it can be that you have certain memories arising or emotions. I want you to really welcome them and give them the space to actually, to tell you whatever they need to tell you. This is a safe space, I want you really to feel space, to feel safe, and really experience whatever it comes. Okay?
Okay.
Are you ready for setting an intention? So just, I want you to think of something that either you would like to release, maybe any fears or limiting beliefs, anything that's holding you back. So it can be related to work, relationships, personal life, anything. Or it could be the other way around, something that you really wanna bring into your life.
Yeah, I think my intention is connected to what I do right now and also the next phase that is like starting in a few days. So I wanna focus on growing my company.
Okay.
Yeah, like building my product, having the people joining the team, welcoming them in, and then bringing what I do like more to the people, like, sharing more about it, bringing more people and collaborators in, and then, yeah, increasing the impact of what we do overall.
Yeah, and let me share that your vision is amazing, and thank you for doing what you're doing. We need you, so thank you for that. So just keep that in mind, alright? So because I want you to be very intentional behind every breath you take. That will make the difference. Otherwise, you can get lost, you can get bored, you can get tired. But if you are breathing because, for that reason, then everything changes. And a beautiful principle about the breath work is, when we inhale, we invite whatever we want in our lives. So with every breath in, you experience that feeling. With every exhale, you release what is no longer serving you. So it can be that you're having, you can start feeling tension in your body or have negative thoughts about your vision. You release them with your exhale. That's a very beautiful, you know, way to connect the breath with your intention as well.
And I think I like that in this particular breath, you focus more on, you know, inhaling deeper, and then the exhale is more passive.
Yeah.
So I think it connects nice with an intention of, okay, what am I bringing in?
Yes, yes. But also, the exhale is very important, because it's how you let go.
Yeah.
So actually, we can really understand as facilitators many things from the way a person exhales and inhales. Because inhale is how you live life, how you enjoy your life. And exhale is how you let go of the past, or how much you hold on the past. So both are very important, but it's very important to know how to connect them with your real life or with your intention. Because there are people that they have so many physical sensations during a session, or there are so many fears arising, and then we need the exhale.
Yeah.
And also, if you put some sound in your exhale, then the body relaxes more. So just keep that in mind. And sometimes, we do a big sigh with the exhale, like... That's completely different than doing... You can try that out. So I will invite you during the session, it's good that you mentioned, to use your voice. You don't need to do it if you don't feel comfortable, I will just invite you.
Okay.
So if you don't feel like it, don't do it. But it's, for me, sometimes I can really see that the body is talking, and it wants to express itself. And sometimes, we are very shy, or we don't feel comfortable, or we have not really learned how to express. And breath work is all about expression, because trauma is stored in the body. And with breath work, we really bring it into the surface and we release it.
Yeah. Yeah. For me, I think that's what, it's a bit of a challenge, the more somatic part, because I'm used to working more with the mind etc. But then indeed, like, when I learned that actually, everything I need to release is like in the body, and then starting with the body, it makes such a huge difference. So that's why I'm also very interested in breath work and trying this out.
Yeah. Good! So we start?
Yes, let's go.
So then, we play the music. Is there any, ah, before, very important, contradictions. I mean, pregnancy is a big contradiction. I miss breath work so much. So pregnancy, any heart diseases, epilepsy, okay. We need to be also very careful about that. And also, is there any problem if I touch you, for example, in the shoulders area? Just to help you relax?
Yeah.
The areas I may touch is the shoulders, maybe the belly if I see you stop breathing. So we gently touch your belly to show you, hey, keep breathing. And sometimes, we hold a lot of tension in the mouth, because we are not expressing, we don't set boundaries. And I see there is a lot of blockages here, so I may massage your jaw. Otherwise, I will invite you to move your jaw. Okay?
Okay.
That's it.
Perfect.
Okay. I will also cover you with a blanket when you lay down, and I want you to start with, already with a mask, it helps you go deeper. And when I tell you, "Lay down," I don't want you to open your eyes and break your state. I want you to lay down, I will help you find the pillow, and also this one, I will put you under the knees, so you don't have any pressure on the back. I just want you to just lay down without breaking your state. Okay, so I play the music. I will actually put it a bit louder, so you tell me... How is the music there? Okay, so, in through the nose, yeah? A bit lower, yes? There?
Yeah.
Okay. So in through the nose, out through the mouth. In a connected way. Find your own pace. Every inhale is active. And exhale is passive, you just let go of the exhale. With every exhale, you feel your body relaxing more and more. I want you to scan your body from top to down, to find any tension you may hold in your body. Maybe in your head. Maybe in the mouth area. Relaxing your shoulders and your chest. Relaxing your belly and your hips. You can have a sigh with your exhale. And check the difference. Very nice. You may already have some sensations in your body, that's completely normal. With every inhale, you energize your body more. You may invite some movement if you want, you can move your head around, to help it relax in the shoulders. You can use the music like dancing to relax your body. When we are relaxed, we can have deeper breaths. Enjoy the sensations in your body. And think of your intention. With every breath in, we don't bring just air inside our body, we bring in energy in every cell of our body. Slowly, lay down without breaking your state. In through the mouth, out through the mouth. Keeping the breath connected. In through the mouth. Feel your belly expanding. Finding your own pace, you don't need to worry about anything. There is nowhere to go, just be here with your breath. Connect to your breath. Find any tension you hold in your body and release it with your exhale. Relax your body more. Feel safe within your body. Nice. With every breath, you bring more oxygen into your body. With every inhale, you bring more energy into your body. With every inhale, you bring your intention into your, every cell of your body. And feel the motion of... Connect to your breath. And connect to your voice. Help your body relax with your exhale. Release your body from the past. You are not your past. With every inhale, we bring in the future. With every exhale, we let go of the past. Every inhale, you go deeper and deeper. Connecting to your body more. Connecting to yourself more. Connecting to your emotions. Feeling the sensations in your body. With every inhale, we are enthusiastic about life. Use your inhale to bring any passion and enthusiasm to your life. Use your inhale... Use your inhale to make your dreams come true. Think of your intention for today. And feel that feeling. And with every breath in, you feel your heart expanding. You have already achieved your goal. Very nice. You may wanna move your jaw and your mouth. You may wanna move it. Use your voice. Very nice, connect to your voice. Use your voice to release the past. Connect to your body, connect to your breath. Find your breath. You are safe within your body. Welcome those emotions. Feel them dissipate away. Think of your intention for today. Commit to your breath. Commit to your life. Commit to your dreams and keep breathing. Every inhale, it starts with every exhale you pass through. Use your breath to go deeper. Every exhale, relax more and more. Every exhale, release the past. Release what is no longer in your mind. Release any limiting beliefs. Any negative self-talk. Any fear that is holding you back, release with your exhale. Release it with your voice. Connect to your breath. Find your breath. Find your voice. Find your breath. Think about your intention for today. What is it that you wanna breathe into your life? What is it that you wanna release and let go of? With every inhale, we go deeper and deeper, bringing more oxygen into your body. With every exhale, we relax more. We release the path. Find your breath. Find your breath. Move your breath. This is the last one before we relax. Go as deep as you can. This is your chance to create the life you want. Commit to your breath. Bringing more oxygen into your body. Bringing more energy into every cell of your body. Say yes to your intentions. Say yes to your breath. Say yes to your dreams. Say yes to future. Use your voice. Very nice. Now let's have three cleansing breaths. In through the nose, out through the mouth. One more. And the last one. Come back to your normal breathing and relax.
Sweet, cool summer breeze whispers through my hair. Hello. I am here. You are felt. You are held. And all the while, I thought I was the one experiencing the wind. Turns out she loves to kiss me back. How funny to realize that she is moving me. Oh, how she moves me. How she moves me. And how funny to realize that fear is really courage becoming known. And that tears are really joy finally coming home. Outside of me, beyond me, from within me, I am blessed for knowing she, for letting her move me. And oh, how she moves me. How she moves me.
Find your breath. 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 Yeah, before maybe you find your own words. You know, we all need time after a breathwork session. Yeah, let me speak a little bit about integration. It's a journey. It's an intense journey. So a breathwork session is not finishing here. Okay? So you are so activated right now and there was a lot of information for your nervous system as well. So I want you to drink a lot of water after a breathwork session. Maybe eat something comfy and take care of yourself. And it can be that today you're a bit triggered or more sensitive or activated. So that's completely normal. Or it can be that you feel very, very tired. I have people that they tell me, "Smara, the next day, even next day, I was super tired. Is that normal?" It is.
Yeah.
So just take it slowly today. Relax, maybe write down, have a shower, don't spend too much time on your screen. But really try to relax and integrate. And it can be that even the next days that you have some insights, that you connect the dots. That you cannot connect at the beginning, because here we work the subconscious. Some of the things, they don't make sense, but they actually make.
Yeah. Yeah, I want to thank you so much.
No, thank you for coming. Thank you for trusting me.